Good evening and welcome to the April 28th, 2025 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city YouTube channel. So, welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Washington has requested an excused absence for the roundtable portion of tonight's meeting. Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Ross.
I'm here. So, council, we have a request for to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Washington for this portion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Johnson and second by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway. Is there any discussion?
I am bummed that he's not here.
Anything else? Going for vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And Councilmember Washington is excused. Thank you. So, we now go to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the roundtable agenda, which is the vacation. It's petition for vacation of certain right-of-way.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway and who's the second? Councilmember Cotton. Any discussion? We do have a request for public comment. We did have public hearing two weeks ago, and so public comment was not planned. However, talking with both our City Council representative and also the applicant, they are fine with public comments. So, are you? Do you want to suspend the rules this evening for public comment and allow public comment?
So moved.
Second.
So, this is part of the agenda, so we'll be adding public comment to the agenda. So, motion by Councilmember Benson and second by Mayor Pro Tem Holloway. So, anything else regarding approving the agenda? Councilmember Johnson?
Just one question about it. Would that only be for people here in the room as per normal rules?
That is correct. Yeah, only those in attending in person. So, okay, so approving the public comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone nay? Opposed? Say none? That passes. And then approving the overall agenda. In favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And anyone nay? So, the agenda is approved. So, tonight, we have the continuation of the petition for vacation of certain right-of-way. This was our, we first reviewed this during Council Roundtable Meeting on April 14th, and that included a public hearing. And so, tonight, we will allow a public comment for three minutes. And please, you need to state your name, city of residence, and this is not a time to ask questions of the council. Just basically make your statement, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Wesley Blaney. I am a resident of Snoqualmie. I'm here to ask you to protect the home at 39194 Southeast Park Street, a home that stood since 1938, as we've learned last two weeks ago, and cared for and presumably taxed fully for nearly a century. Today, the home's future appears threatened, not because of any wrongdoing, but because of a long-forgotten appearing error, mapping error, in the unused strip of land. A strip of land that was never built into a road and serves no public function. I understand the vision behind the Riverwalk project, and it is beautiful on paper, but your duty first and foremost is to protect the residents of Snoqualmie, not to push forward a speculative project without our full consent or vote. The Riverwalk was never put to a public vote, as far as I understand. And spending taxpayer dollars for the sake of a plan that may never come to full fruition is not honoring the oath in which each of you has taken to serve the community. Many citizens would much rather see the city funds used to connect and enhance the existing trails and trail system we already have here, built on what serves the people today, not tearing down public trust for a pipe dream to copy another city on the other side of the country. This particular property does not even offer river access. The land between it and the river is privately owned. There is no pressing public need here, but there is a pressing need to protect the residents' rights. I urge the council to vacate the unnecessary right-of-way under the home, do the right thing, and allow this house to remain legally and securely as part of Snoqualmie, as it has for nearly a century. One council member in particular, two weeks ago, ascertains that vacating this right-of-way would remove the public river access, which is false. The river access they refer to is on privately-owned land, and the public cannot legally cross it. If the council claims it cannot vacate the land without public purpose, then keeping the land that serves no public purpose is equally a violation of that standard. Keeping an unused strip of land that serves no function also lacks any public purpose. And finally, this home has been taxed at full value for decades, a recognition of its legitimacy, yet the city now treats it as an illegal structure. I urge you again, do the right thing, vacate the land, unnecessary right-of-way, and protect this home from allowing it to remain, for which it has been for longer than anyone in this room has been alive. Protect the home, protect the people, and honor the oath in which you've taken to the residents of Snoqualmie. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so, City Councilor Kim Pratt will continue her question-answer portion. So, out of the 10 minutes from last couple, two weeks ago, she had 4 minutes 18 seconds plus an additional five minutes that was allotted for the petitioner during that roundtable. So, she has a total of nine minutes and 18 seconds.
Council, we were in the middle of question and answer, and a lot of questions from Councilmember Benson. Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure I opened it up to see if anyone else had questions for me tonight.
Mayor Pro Tem Holloway.
So, back when this house was originally plotted for all that land, is it reasonable to assume there should have been a title survey or whatever to advise them on any easements or whatever? Or do we know if that was done?
Okay. Do we know? No. It was built in 1938, and so we know that from, you know, a county tax record. So, I do not know, I don't even know if there was title companies then, to tell you the truth. So, no, I do not know. We know that when it was first built, it was a furnace shop that's on that piece of paper for the permit from 1938, and we've seen pictures. It has a furnace shop sign on there. And then, we had documents from the petitioners at your last hearing that showed residence on the permit. That was in 1985. So, it didn't become a residence until sometime after 1985.
And second question. When we do inspections for modifications, plumbing, electrical, whatever, is it normal practice, or is it reasonable to assume that a title or plot line review occurs as part of that?
The city doesn't require surveys for those kinds of inspections. Even if the individual had a title report in 1985, it would not, it would have showed that they owned Lot 1, Block 4, and it wouldn't have shown they owned Schusman Avenue, where we now know this building sits, or half of it, three-quarters of it, sits today.
Councilmember Watten.
I'm curious, because as being a lender myself, typically, there is a title, and there's a clear title to a piece of property, real estate. And with that, it allows a piece of property to be financed through Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, traditional financing. Is that the case on this property?
Well, what we do know is, I gave you the deed, in your packet material, I gave you a copy of the deed of trust that the petitioners recorded with King County, and that was after the 1997 survey was recorded. So, if petitioners, as a lender and a reasonable business practice, got a title report, that 1997 survey should have shown up on that title report. Do I know if they got a title report? No.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cotton.
So, in some of the paperwork that was submitted to us by the applicant, there is a title report by Old Republic Title Company, and under Schedule B Part 2, there is actually several notations in there. The thing I wanted to bring up was you talked about the home in being established as a residence in 85. One of the things, item number nine, it says easement on the easterly portion. Now, it doesn't really give any, you know, good other description, but the easterly portion, which is the Schusman Avenue side of that.
It is stuff Lot 1, yes.
They have, that was granted, it showed in September of 61, a drainage tile, so an easement was granted to the town of Snoqualmie. In that same title report that you're referring to, item number 11 also shows that there's any rights, easements, interests, or claims which may exist or arise by fact shown in the 1997 plat survey, encroachment of the building onto Schusman right-of-way and Park Street right-of-way. And it also describes the dirt and gravel roads. So, it does reference in the title, which, I'm sorry to say, I didn't write down the date of.
It's a very recent title report.
Yeah. So, but they do note all of these things that, you know, show that there has been easements granted for public access. So, that still stands, that that is used for, you know, while it may not be public right-of-way to the river at this time, because that easterly portion of Block 3, Lot 1, you know, is now cut off from the rest of the right-of-way. But there's easements for public access for utilities and other types of things as well. So, that's already been documented since 1961 on that as well. So, it is still being used for public right-of-way.
The one thing I said that you mentioned, you know, you said that the, you know, public access doesn't go all the way down to the river right now.
Now. Initially, that's what it was there for, though.
Right. And what I would say is that the Riverwalk is a vision, and I think the City Council, you are used to planning visions and then taking steps towards them. They don't come to fruition all at once. And that's what, that's the public purpose that the city staff is talking to you in this case, is that that Riverwalk would be a public purpose. And council is the legislative authority to weigh that, to weigh those purposes, and what is the public purpose? Do you still have one for this street? And it is, you are clearly the body who has authority to vacate this street. It is your legislative authority that was granted to you. So, you are the body to do that.
Councilperson Johnson?
For, I'm just going to go with the map that I'm looking at. The property on the Lot 39192 that is between this property and the river, it looks like there is a path of some kind that gets back there that is effectively acting as a continuation of Schusman to that property. So, it seems like.
Is that shown on this? This is the 1997 survey?
Yeah, I'm on page 65 of the packet.
Okay.
The agenda packet. It's the King County iMap.
Okay. This isn't the iMap, but this does show that.
Yeah, there's kind of that section along there. So, it just seems to me that there is an extension of Schusman that is clearly intended to go that way, and it's kind of, kind of jogs around the building in an awkward way. Seems there's a way that someone is using it.
Councilmember Benson?
Yeah. Do we have other situations like this in Snoqualmie where there are property owners encroaching on city rights of way right now? Do we have situations like that? What are we, what are we doing about those?
We're already taking action.
What can I, what are some examples of those actions and when they've taken place?
I think the city attorney would advise that we go in executive session before we discuss that.
Really?
Because it involves legal.
It involves potential litigation or litigation. So, we, under RCW 42.30.110, Section I, we can go into executive session to discuss those.
I prefer to ask my question in a way that we don't have to go to executive session, because I don't think this should be an executive session conversation.
Councilmember Benson, can I try to answer it without?
Yeah.
I think the answer is, yes, there are situations like where there may be structures built in the right-of-way, but in terms of what actions the city is taking, that should probably be something for executive session.
So, the actions are not always the same?
I mean, I think every situation is going to be unique, so.
I'd also be curious to know how much property tax has been paid on this property since 1938. I'd be, I'd be very curious to know that figure. It seems to remain here. I am uncomfortable, I am uncomfortable with the fact that this property has been occupied and used and taxed for a long time. And then, we're telling the property owners that they don't have rights to that property. I understand the, that there is a right-of-way, the Schusman right-of-way. I'm not disputing that that exists at all. It clearly does, but that it's only being, we're only concerned about it now, after, I'm not going to do the math, over 80 years. Why now? Why now are we disputing that? When we've collected taxes on it for a long time, now we're disputing it. There is an arbitrariness to that that I'm not comfortable with.
So, first of all, so, the time is up for the City Councilor Pratt. The next step would be to hear rebuttals for five minutes for rebuttal, but at this point, for each side, do we want to hear rebuttal, or do you want to continue this discussion?
I'd like to continue, or at least make a comment regarding Councilmember Benson's.
Because we had several hands up, so who was up first then? Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
No, I'm just, I agree with the motion forward to at least allow the closure of this last question.
Okay.
Yes, mine's about that topic.
Councilperson Johnson, Councilwoman Cotton.
I was just curious if there's any way to know how the King County assessor came up with how much to tax it. Is it based on the section that is actually built, or is it based on the lot itself, and to what degree that would even be possible to know?
Councilwoman Cotton?
My understanding is that the council is just addressing the vacation of the right-of-way. We're not here to make decisions about arbitrariness of any other decisions about real estate property at this time. I mean, we can certainly discuss it, we can certainly have feelings about it, but my understanding is that, you know, we're looking at just the right-of-way, not the property itself, and the home on it, but we're looking at, you know, whether the city actually ever gave up that right-of-way.
Councilwoman Watten?
So, just for the record, going to the King County Assessor's website, the land value in going back to 1996 had a $0 to it, and there was a $5,000 improvement done in 98. There was a second improvement done in 2014 of $120,000. So, to answer the question that was raised, I just want some clarity around that, and that is, it's only been in the recent years that there's been significant increase in any value in that property.
So, it was taxed at $0 up to 96?
So, do we want to go ahead with our rebuttal? Okay. So, the applicant, you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Then, one of the council will be able to continue with this question and answer. I have a few questions here. I don't know what order you want me to respond to them in, but the tax assessed land value is separate from the tax assessed improvement value. We can put those into the exhibits if you'd like. The building has been there a long time, but the land value is separate. And the King County tax assessors' records, I'm sure if Emily Artese were here, she would say that's a separate government function, and she wouldn't want you to look at them too much. But we agree with Councilmember Benson's questions that the tax assessed value is illustrative of the property owner's position, that it's worth something, and it's more than $10,000. You're welcome to interrupt me and ask any questions you want. I'm going to go back to Mayor Pro Tem Holloway's first question about plotted for when it was built. Kim said no. I wanted to give you some background on that. These two properties used to be owned by the same person, Richard Clark. He was one of our borrowers. He went into bankruptcy about 10 years ago. One of the homes was exempt from collection efforts and creditors through bankruptcy, the homestead exemption. The property we own now was not exempted from collection, so that's how we came to own it. So, I think the previous two parcels being owned by the same person is why it doesn't have a clean title history. Councilmember Benson's previous question about why now, I think it's just because of the Riverwalk Trail. Councilmember Johnson's question about what's the tax assessed value based on? I've challenged tax assessments before. They will tell you it's based on comps, sale price, square footage, property, square footage of the home itself and of the lot. And then, it's just a mathematical function. Here's the price per square foot of a house on the river in Snoqualmie, and they come up with a number. That's why it keeps going up every year, because home prices do, too. You can challenge it and get it lowered, that's usually what homeowners do, but we have paid taxes on it since we've owned it. We also paid, I think this is in some of our materials, we paid utilities to the city of Snoqualmie to get power to the house for the 10 years that we've owned it as well. I have some of those bills, too, if you'd like. In terms of a collateral estoppel argument, we've relied on the city to tell us we can exist. Sorry. Councilmember Cotton, please.
Oh, finish your. I know, if you want to complete your rebuttal, excuse me, then we can do questions.
We'll waive our five minutes. We can continue with questions. I wanted to open it up for questions from the council for all of our time today. And Dean may have stuff he wants to say as well. Go ahead.
The question that I had, actually, was just in the title company documents that, again, you had submitted to us that, that there was, and I just want to know if these numbers are correct. There was reference to in 2009, the deed of trust from the Olsons, I believe.
Olson, Gary Olson?
No, before the Olsons. Larson's submitted that to ISOLA for 15, there was a deed of trust from the Olsons to ISOLA for $15,000. And then.
Show me which page in the materials you're looking at, please.
Okay, so, it was under the title company documents.
Yeah. Page 38, 30, you mean the La Sarge's?
I'm not sure which page, if I have that here, but then there's reference to in 2012, another deed of trust from the Olsons for $141,000.
Gary Olson was the attorney NWBBS hired to collect from the borrower Graham Clark.
Okay.
Sorry, Richard Clark and Graham Clark.
And so, this was for $141,000.
Correct.
And then, it was sold at auction for $192,000.
Yeah, what's your question?
So, I, no, I just wanted to know if those numbers are accurate.
Yes, they're based on the interest accrued from a borrower, the Clarks. Their company was called Abundant Homes. The company shut down around 2010, like a lot of home builders, and Gary Olson's attorney's fees were in there, along with interest on the loan. The deed of trust is what the lender used to record against the property, both of them.
Okay. So, that was, so, $192,000 was, was that the value of the house and property at the time at the auction?
No, and I think you asked a question about this two weeks ago. We're not, Kim made a reference to it. We're not a mortgage lender, we're a construction lender. Richard Clark was a home builder. Northwest Builders Finance is the company's name. We lend to home builders, and he went out of business. So, $192,000 was the amount he borrowed, not for the home. He used the home as collateral.
Okay, so, that was.
That's why we didn't do due diligence on this property. We weren't lending him money to buy the property. He already owned the property.
Okay, all right. Now I understand.
Perfect timing.
Okay, thank you.
So, the rebuttal time is up. Do we have any further questions for them? Otherwise, we will turn it over to the City Councilor.
Counsel, you just heard petitioner say they didn't do their due diligence. So, and I would say, he also addressed the legal theory of collateral estoppel. That's part of a quiet title action. So, also, that there were owners at one time, and I also saw this, looking at the title of these properties, that some of the owners have owned two lots at one time. That, in my opinion, would not cause confusion for a good title company. If you've got a title report on this Lot 1, Block 4, it would have shown that 1997 survey and shown that there were encroachments. So, counsel, I guess I would just conclude that this is up to you. You are the City Council for the city of Snoqualmie. The courts have said you are the best ones to decide what is the public purpose and which way does it sway you on this street vacation. What I've seen from staff is that they're looking at the Riverwalk, and so would not say to you, vacate this property for the private use of petitioners who foreclosed on this property in 2012 that was used as collateral for a construction loan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Holloway?
I guess a partially follow-up on the statement that was just made, that being why now?
Why now?
This question did not result as a result of the city taking actions to acquire the property or to make arrangements around Riverwalk. It's really arose because there was an action and motion by the applicant to actually sell the property, correct? What brought us to this point? And I disagree that it was Riverwalk that did that.
Planning for Riverwalk, this is a piece that would be needed.
Yes.
And so, the city, I can't tell you if the city approached the petitioners because it went up for sale, or if it went up for sale after that. I'm sorry, I'm not sure of the timing, but this dispute with the petitioners has been going on for quite a while. This is not, you know, new. I would say why now is because it came to the city's attention through King County that this house was built on Schusman Avenue. That's why now, because it came to city staff's attention that there was this very large encroachment onto public property. Up until then, it was not an issue.
Do we have any other questions? I would say that we have been working on the River Trail, because as we purchase the different homes throughout that area, as part of the flood control district, that is part of the River Trail. That is why we were purchasing them, is also to just. That is part of the River Trail. That is why we were purchasing them is also to, um, just open up, it's the open space. I know Dylan Gamble has, you know, more information on it, um, but we approved this in our CIP a long time ago, probably before I even was on council for twenty-seventeen. I don't know what year, but anyway.
Brian? When?
So it's been an active program and we could.
It's been an active program for years.
Right. So Councilwoman Cotton and then Councilwoman Benson?
So is Mr. Blaney, and I don't know if I can ask a question of, or have the information come through this. I'm trying to find out about who, who actually owns thirty-nine, one ninety-two.
But yeah, I think we're going to have a conversation. If this is to the applicant, we can ask a question of the applicant.
Who, who actually owns that property behind here?
It is a private property owner. Uh, the, the road that has been talked about that goes around my client's property, uh, through what is now city-owned property and then goes towards the river, has been a private driveway to that home on the river for a long time. Uh, the city only acquired the property immediately east of us in the last ten years, I think, maybe.
No, that was part of the right of way to the river initially in the eighteen ninety plat.
So this plat ends at the east side of our property. And then there's a different plat.
Yeah.
On, on the other side of it.
Block three, yeah, and then on the other side of it.
And the right of way over there was vacated at some time too, um, which is why it doesn't, it's not called out on the same maps that we've been looking at. But in all the aerial photos that I've ever seen, and I've looked at a lot, uh, it's always just been a private driveway.
Yeah.
To that property. It's never continued to the river.
Flow is that that right of way, that Schusman had initially gone up on either side of both the front and back property, um, all the way to the river, correct?
And, yes, correct. What I can tell you about the way that these plats were created is they, they did not care where these roads actually were located physically on the ground. They, you know, I think some of the city's website acknowledges, you know, this was rampant speculation and they were just throwing down these maps regardless of what was on the ground and then selling lots.
That is true, that we would state there's rampant speculation on our website or anything like that. Um, do we have any more questions for, for the applicant? Councilwoman Benson, you had a comment?
Well, I had a question for you, actually. I wanted to make sure that I understood what you were saying, uh, about the, I, if it, let me know if I'm misunderstanding you at all. What you were saying is that the Riverwalk plan has long been in the CIP and this situation arose. And so we took action on it, much as we would if a property came to be available for sale in that same planning area and then we would use flood mitigation monies to, to purchase it.
Well, I think it's on our list of properties to purchase.
But is, is that, is that generally what you were, what, what your point was?
But yeah, my point is that this has been an active project or program, right, through, I don't think it was FEMA, but the King County Flood Control District. We've had a listing of homes all along there, starting over near, you know, on Railroad Avenue two-two.
Several purchases just in the time that I've been on council.
Right, and, and quite a few since before that. And then there's actually architectural drawings of, of the Riverwalk itself, what it looks like. And we had like a major grant that received from Department of Commerce that, you know, helped design it. There's a variety of things. So this has been ongoing for quite a few years. So we've already heard from the applicant. We've heard the councilor. Council, do you want to start doing deliberations then? I think we've heard enough from the applicant. Is that correct? Thank you.
Um, I'd like to hear whatever he has to say.
Well.
Let's do the chairs.
We did this, the chair says, right. So I think we've, we've heard probably everything, right? Um, this are. Thank you. Councilwoman Johnson?
I, I would be fine if, uh, they had one other thing to say.
Second.
Anyone else?
Sure.
So give them one minute?
I'll be very fast, Mayor Ross. Thank you very much. Uh, I want to answer any of the questions. I only have a minute. I wanted you to know that based on the reception we received two weeks ago, we entered conversations with the tribe uh, to donate this property instead of selling it to the city. It would mean that we get the full value of a write-off for the tax assessed value of five hundred and seventy-four thousand. So if we don't receive an offer from the city that's more than ten thousand dollars, uh, we'll donate it to the tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Because.
Clarification?
Yes.
You don't see, receive an offer for acquisition of the property that's more than ten thousand dollars?
That's the highest offered.
And does our city councilor Pratt, do you have any additional comments you'd like to make? I think you had like a minute fifty left on your, out of the five minutes. Plus we could add the additional minute, which would be almost three minutes, two minutes and fifty seconds.
I think what petitioner is saying, he's talking about lot one, block four, the lot they actually own, where part of the houses on it. And they're saying if you don't vacate the right, right of way, we will give it to the tribe. So I just want to be clear. They can't give the tribe Schusman Avenue. And I would say.
It still remains.
And, and I would say that appraisals have been done on, um, the property that they actually own on block four, lot one. And the appraisals I have seen all say, if I, I don't have any title report, I don't have any information about title to this property. And it said that at least three times in the appraisal that I saw that listed lot one, block four at hundreds of thousands of dollars, that that appraiser was not given a title report. So I think value is very much up in the air. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, we have until six fifty, um, for deliberations or, or do you want to move to a vote? There's three options. One is to motion to approve, one is to approve with conditions, or to deny the vacation.
Well, you said, is that, could you repeat this?
So one is to motion to approve, one is to approve with conditions, and the conditions are written up in the, we have the memorandum from Medrona. And the other one is to deny the vacation.
There's no deny with conditions?
There's not.
I want to be at your house for the family arguments.
Thanksgiving.
Mayor Protem Holloway?
I mean, it, does it have to be strictly binary? I mean, there's, there's something of value here, otherwise we wouldn't be arguing about it. There's been a lot of contributions to getting both on part of the city and part of the applicants, a part of a cast of thousands for the past eighty years to get us here. So is there anything to say, you know, I guess potential minimum, we're not vacating, but we could, we could give you the easement for something rather. So I mean, is it vacate or go away? Or vacate with conditions? That's our only choices. Or can those conditions be X amount of dollars?
The hearing today is for a right-of-way vacation. That's what they've petitioned for. Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm, at this point, and just having a background in, in dealing with lending on properties, I'm not convinced that there's clear title to this property as it stands today, even though that there has been value of some amount. If you look back on King County's property assessment over the last, uh, twenty-five years, it's gone from a very modest amount until there was an investment by a private investor for this construction and build-out. And, uh, I, I'm not certain that it should have happened in the first place, and that's not the argument. The argument is for the vacation of a street that belongs to the city.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Yeah, I was just going back to the original briefing that we had. We're looking at, again, just whether or not we're going to, to vacate the street, whether it's being done for a public purpose. And I don't necessarily see how we can support this vacation of a public right for a private benefit. There have been a whole lot of additional arguments that have been made. I don't know that they're particularly persuasive to me, at least based on the facts that we have been given. I think I would like to speak to the city attorney, um, possibly before voting, just to ask a couple of additional questions, but that would probably be where I'm at at the moment.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Uh, I would wonder, is it an established fact that this, uh, structure is on, or at least a large section of the structure is on public property? That seems to have been, uh, answered in the affirmative. And has there been a public use in the past? Is there an, an intended public use? And the answer to both of those is, uh, also yes. So, um, I, I don't see a strong enough compelling argument to, uh, cede that land. Oh, yeah, I'll just fall. And, uh, given that there could be certain legal questions, I too would be, uh, interested in having uh, an executive session before we go to a vote, just to make sure that we've dotted all of our Ts and crossed all of our Is.
Councilwoman Cotton?
So regarding the comments that were just made, um, by, uh, the, the attorneys, um, if, so, um, I, I guess I'm trying to tippy-toe around this, but is what you're telling us that if we offer ten thousand and one dollars to you, that you would not give the property to the tribe?
Okay, it's fair. You can ask, answer a question in ten seconds. Go ahead, up at the, there. Did you want to respond to that?
Pass.
I think that's an answer in itself, too.
That's right. Councilwoman Johnson?
So just a, a quick point on that is that, um, if we did want to talk about, uh, pricing and stuff, that is a separate conversation, I think, and also one I think would be executive, if I'm not mistaken.
Um, so, um, under RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, um, to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or per- purchase would be appropriate for executive session.
But tonight we're only talking about the vacation of it, right?
Yeah, totally agree.
Any other comments, questions? I don't know that we have enough time tonight for an executive session since we need to end at six fifty.
So do we want to continue the, uh, street vacation discussion to the next roundtable, which I think is on May twelfth?
Yes, we need to.
It sounds like.
Yes, Councilwoman Benson?
Sounds like the next step would be a, uh, an executive session.
Right. So it'd be May twelfth at six P M.
Madam clerk, does, city clerk, does that work, the May twelfth at six P M?
Really? So let me just look at the schedule.
And then applicant, does that work for you to be here in case we, there, the council has questions outside of executive session? We're looking at Monday, May twelfth at six P M. I guess Ms. Pratt too. Does that work for you?
I think it's fine, yes. That's fine. Okay. Okay, so it was set another roundtable for May twelfth at six P M. It would probably start out with an executive session.
And that would be executive session under potential litigation.
So is there any other comments we have this evening? All right, seeing none, we can adjourn early at six forty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And we are adjourned. Council, this brings us to our regular meeting of the city council. The time is seven P M. And we just completed a roundtable. So let the record show that all council are present. Um, council, would you please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? So we'll have Councilmember Washington, please lead it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to our first item. Regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Holloway and Councilwoman Christensen seconded it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And the agenda is unanimously approved. Next item is the fire department badge pending ceremony for Juan Osagira. So we'll have Chief Bailey, would you please introduce this item?
You gotta stand here too. You're not, you don't get out of this. You gotta stand right here. Good evening, council. Uh, I want to take the opportunity to, uh, introduce to you our newest firefighter. Uh, this is Juan Osaguita, and he is, uh, unfortunately his family couldn't be here tonight. Uh, but we'll just talk a little bit about, uh, what he brings to our department. So Juan and his wife are from Bellingham, Washington. His wife Erin is a nurse and they have a fourteen-year-old son, Kiony. He plays, his son plays travel baseball and loves his drum set. And some of the things they like to do as a family are they enjoy heading up to the mountains to snowboard, mountain biking, pickleball, and updating and working on their house. So for experience, uh, Juan has twelve years of experience as a firefighter. He came to us from Boeing Fire Department most recently, after a couple of years down in California. And, uh, he's had, before that, he had four years of service in the U.S. Coast Guard, uh, in the military, and then six years of experience as an electrician in the construction trade before that. Another thing about Juan is he grew up in a Spanish-speaking home, which obviously can come handy in the fire service to help us communicate with our citizens. A little bit about why he chose Snoqualmie Fire, uh, the way we usually do things in the department, not only do we advertise for the testing, but when we narrow it down, we bring everybody in for a ride-along, the ones that are near the top. And so Juan says that when he did his ride-along with Snoqualmie Fire, it gave him an inside look at who the people are that work here and how supportive and encouraging we were. And after going on a few calls, he said it was an easy decision for him to, uh, to come here and join our department. Says he's looking forward to working with everyone here in the city and the department and is, uh, definitely excited for the opportunity. And then just a little bit to add, I think we're very, uh, fortunate to have Juan join us. We've been really lucky the last couple of years. We've got some really great employees to join the fire department, especially with a lot of experience, so they can come right in, plug and play, and be ready to go and join our team pretty quick. So I think we're really lucky to have him join us. I think we have three, three Boeing, three Boeing guys now, so at least we're poaching from somebody else, right? Got to keep the. Uh, so now, uh, like we typically do, Juan, uh, if you go over, Mayor is going to present you with your helmet. And then Chief, uh, Deputy Chief Brown is going to come up and pin on his, his badge for him.
Stay with it.
Congratulations.
Yes.
And thank you for joining us, firefighter Osigera. Right. Thank you. Next item is AB 25-058, Community Development, Economic Development Director Confirmation. So the city recently concluded that the Development Director Recruitment, and the mayor, myself, has selected Mona Davis as the next Community Development, Economic Development Director. She comes with us with over 25 years of experience in community planning and development. She's worked for counties and cities across Western Washington, including being a Community Development Director for a nearby city. She's a member of the American Planning Association and the Planners Association of Washington. And she's not here this evening, because she's actually on vacation. But if you-
Not a good sign.
Much deserved.
So if you confirm her appointment, she'd actually begin her job on May 1st as a director. So moved to confirm Mayor's appointment of Mona Davis as Community Development Director. Is there a move?
Second.
Second.
Has been moved by Councilor Cullen and seconded by Councilor Johnson. Is there any discussion? Councilor Watson?
I want to say, what an excellent choice that you have in Ms. Davis. I've known her for a number of years. She's been involved in the affordable housing forums that we've had in the past and, and just delighted when she showed up here to work. And resident, longtime resident of the Valley. So she's going to be a great addition, so congratulations.
Thank you. Councilor Johnson?
Yes, I think that, from what I've seen, she's been performing outstandingly. And that's about much staff, so I look forward to seeing how that, how that department evolves as she gets some more help.
Thank you.
Feel like she might have the votes.
So moving to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous, and we have confirmed Mona Davis as our new Community Development, Economic Development Director. And we will administer the oath of office in a future council meeting ceremonial. However, I will be giving her the oath when she returns from vacation, so probably on Thursday. So, thank you. Just moving on to Small Business Week, so you don't have to feel obligated to stay. We do have a long agenda this evening, so. Thank you to the Fire Department for attending. Okay. Small Business Week is an opportunity to encourage all residents to support and celebrate the contribution of our small business, small businesses. And the proclamation, whereas the City of Snoqualmie recognizes and values the vital role that small businesses play in the economic vitality, cultural richness, and overall well-being of our community. And whereas small businesses are the foundation of our local economy, excuse me, providing jobs, fostering innovation, and contributing to the unique character of Snoqualmie. And whereas the entrepreneurial spirit and dedication of our small business owners and operators are essential to the continued growth and prosperity of our city. And whereas National Small Business Week provides an opportunity for residents and visitors to shop local, patronize our community businesses, and recognize the importance of small businesses to our vibrant and thriving city. And whereas the City of Snoqualmie supports and joins the national effort to recognize the contributions of small businesses to the local and American economy and their importance to ensuring that our local communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. So now therefore I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim, May 4th through May 10th, as Small Business Week. So. So please be sure to shop local. Thank you. Next item is public comment. At this time, we provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. No one, no online public comments will be accepted during the meeting. Written comments are encouraged, maybe submitted in person, mail or email to cityclerk@snowqualmiewa.gov. So first, a few ground rules is to Snoqualmie residents who are not present have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. Therefore, comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence for the record. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, staff, or to engage in debate. So is there anyone here that would like to make public comment?
I'll be very fast. My name is Deborah Landers. I'm from North Bend, and I'm here representing North Bend Art and Industry. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about Art Off the Rails. It's our third annual festival. I just want you to know that when it was created, it was created as a collaborative festival with the Snoqualmie Arts Commission, the Northwest Historic Railway Museum, and North Bend Art and Industry. So the collaboration is really important to us, as is the tie of the railway in connecting our two communities. So our third annual year, this year, it's going to be fabulous, because the last two years, it was rainy and miserable and lightning. And this year, pray to the sun gods, it's going to be lovely. So this year, it is a little bit different, because I think both of, both of our cities are working on improving our railway parks. So normally, we have music and artists in both of the railway parks, and we have music or some type of art event at the Historic Railway Campus. This year, we're going to primarily have the artists and music at the, it's a very long name, William Henry Taylor Park in North Bend. But we are tying the, the two communities together and the historic campus with a community art project at each area and encouraging people to go into downtown, see the fabulous art studios and artists that are in our downtown communities, too. So it's June 21st, 10 to 4 o'clock. It's going to be really fun. Do come out. We have some really fun food trucks this time, too. So again, June 21st, I've got some flyers. I know you're all excited. Pray to the sun god.
Thank you, Deborah. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Next item is move on to an executive session. RCW 42.30.1101I to discuss legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to potential litigation lasting approximately, how long do you think?
Should we start with 10 minutes? We can always come out for longer.
10 minutes. Those attending would include City Administrator Chambliss, City Attorney Burke, HR Manager Kim Johnson, and Summit Law Attorney Peter Altman. And the recording will pause. And after the executive session is concluded, and we will return to open session approximately, we say 10 minutes, so probably it'll take us five minutes to get up there. 7:25. So we're doing, so 7:25. We'll be meeting in the Mount Si Conference Room, so let's head up there. Thank you. Great. It's now 7:48, and we're back from executive session. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated April 14, 2025, approved the claims report dated April 28, 2025, AB 25-055, Job Order Contracting Consultant Contract Extension, AB 25-056, Northwest Railway Museum Restroom Maintenance and Operations Agreement. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by-
Second.
Councilor Laffeyton and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. We've asked if there's any public comment regarding that, but you no longer have any public members in the council chambers. So moving on, is there any discussion about any of those items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion is unanimous, and the consent agenda is approved. Next item, Public Safety. Is there a Public Safety Committee report?
There is not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community Development, is there a Community Development Committee report?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our first committee report for Parks and Public Works is AB 25-053, Lease Agreement with Northwest Landscape LLC. Councilor Benton, would you please read the introduction and motion?
This agenda bill proposes a new lease agreement with an updated rental fee for a rental site on city property adjacent to the water reclamation facility on Mill Pond Road. Most motion, move to approve, adopt Resolution 1715, authorizing the mayor to sign a lease agreement with Northwest Landscape Services LLC.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Benson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Seeing no, no one is here for public comment. We will move on to, we have our Parks and Public Works Deputy Director Phil Bennett is here to answer any questions.
Good evening.
Councilor, do we have any questions regarding this lease agreement? Councilor Benson?
Will you remind us what the lease was at before? Current one?
Yes, the amount-
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the amount that was on the lease from 2016 to now is $1,917.86 monthly.
And what is the proposed increase?
$4,932.
So 157% increase?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm-
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
And what was the basis of determination of that lease fee?
The basis of the determination was a, a real estate appraisal done by CBRE, looking at comparables, you know, their appraisal process. And that was done in November of last year.
Councilor Benson?
According to the appraisal, this is an appropriate fee to charge for, for this parcel of land. This company has been paying the 1,900 whatever since 2016. And then we did an appraisal in November. And now it is determined that the appropriate amount to rent that parcel for is five grand a month instead of two grand. This seems to me, my opinion, an inordinate amount to increase rent. And the argument against my position is they've been getting a screaming deal for several years, which I think is a fair argument. But at the same time, if you're a business and you have overhead and you, and you calculate that into what you're doing, to suddenly have 157% increase in your rent seems, seems onerous. I would, I would, I would feel more comfortable. I'm, I'm not saying that it's, that it's an inappropriate amount for the rent, but I would, I would be, feel more comfortable if we worked our way up to that rather than smacking a, a company in the face with a sudden 157% rental increase.
Our city attorney?
I just wanted to caution council that, under the Washington State Constitution, there is gift of public funds is not allowed. And so we do have an assessed value of this property by an outside third party, and they are willing to pay it.
Hold on. So then, aren't we already in breach of that for the last several years?
Well, we're fixing it now. So I, I, I wasn't there when that was done, but we went and got an appraisal, and now we're fixing it to have them enter a new lease to pay the appropriate amount.
And that fix needs to be an immediate sledgehammer of a fix? That's the only way to, to appropriately fix it?
My concern would be if we, if you wanted to pay less, you could be in violation of the state constitution for gift of public funds. I, I don't think they're, they serve a purpose like supporting the poor or infirm.
My, my concern is mistreating a local business with a 157% immediate rental increase. That's my concern.
Councilor Christensen?
Yeah, sorry. I, I do understand Councilmember Benson's concerns, but I was just wanting to confirm that the company that is proposing to continue on with the new lease is, they are willing and able to pay the new proposed amount? And they-
That is correct.
Okay. Did, did they raise concerns about being unable to pay?
They did not.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Kind of back to your point, though. If there are conditions in the city in which we have done similar agreements but haven't checked for five years what the appropriate market value is of that agreement, you're not, I guess, I'm, you're not technically in violation of the gift of public funds till you were aware that you're doing gift of public funds. Now that we have become aware, we pretty much have to do market value. And, and you have to weigh the, the rights of the individual company. Now, I don't think we violated the rights, because we're just telling them we need to do market value on this property, but against the rights of the citizens. And the citizens have the right that we are not giving public funds to individual entities just cause. Okay, that we are doing equitable, we're getting equitable return for those public things in our trust that we are leasing out, or we are borrowing out, or whatever, on their behalf. So now that we're aware, we've done the lease, we pretty much have to. And let's also be aware, this is relatively unimproved land. So if by chance the leasurer were to say, no, they have options. This is not like they put a building on there and we're putting, we're upping the land underneath, and they're kind of stuck. This is a gravel parking lot that they could go somewhere else if they really had to. Now, they've agreed that this is probably reasonable and have said they will continue, this suits their operations. I, I don't see cause for backing off from what is market value on the property.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I definitely hear the, the concerns over this. And the only thing that's standing out to me is I'm looking at the summary of comparables in the study, and none of them are really in the ballpark of the annual rent that we're talking about with this property, even after adjusting it. I mean, I suppose maybe one of the properties, you could argue, is kind of adjacent to Snoqualmie Valley. But I mean, where's a property in Duval, or Carnation, or North Bend? I mean, these kind of look to me more like, you know, if I owned a, a building over on Center and I said, oh, ah, yes, I know a good comparable, how about downtown Bellevue? You know, these just don't look comparable to me from what I'm looking at. But maybe that's just my lack of education on the subject matter. That said, if the tenant was ready, willing, and able, and this is the best information that we have to act on, then I don't feel as though I'm in a position to contradict the results of the report, even though I do have that concern about the comparables.
Any other comments? Seeing none, moving to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have one nay, Councilor Benson. So the motion passes to approve the lease agreement with Northwest Landscape LLC. Next item is Utility Rate Study Presentation and Updates. We have our CIP Manager Dylan Gamble to present tonight. And this was presented earlier, I guess, last week in Parks and Public Works Group.
Good evening, Council. As the mayor stated, I'm going to give the same presentation that I gave to the Parks and Public Works Committee, or last week. So let me pull up my slideshow. This is a- This is a, I tried to make it short, but it has a lot of detail, so it's gonna be a lot of, I'm not gonna read from the slides per se exactly, but I do want to go through each item in the slide, and essentially what we're gonna be doing is looking at the rate study in a couple ways, I'm gonna give you an update as to the takeaways from the previous council meeting, as well as some background history of past rate studies, and then lastly, I'm going to talk about some concerns facing the utilities financially speaking, so. First, I just want to give you an update that I have worked with FCS Group to get going on the report for the, for this ordinance and for the rate study at large, excluding the parts that we have not done yet, and they should be getting it to me sometime next week, so I'll be able to review it, prepare for the next available Parks and Public Works Committee meeting, which is anticipated to be May 20th. So that's the timing on that. And then part of unpacking the history of the rate studies, I just kind of created these two chunks here, these are the last two rate studies that the city did for utilities. The one in 2016 was adopted, it's typically just called the 2016 rate study, but it was adopted in 2017. You can see here the ordinance and this materials will be put onto the city's website, so you don't have to zoom in, so to speak. But I wanted to state that the way that these past two rate studies were structured is that there is a final report or a staff report, and that's what I produce as an agenda bill. So it's the same thing, they're almost identical, very similar formatting and everything. And then for, just of note, in the 2016 rate study, we had FCS stated that they did not get the report to council until post adoption of the ordinance, the dates there, May versus February. And then in the 2020 rate study, the report was actually never produced, so following the ordinances, they were directed not to produce the final report. So they did not, and so there is no 2020 report. There is, however, a couple of pretty impactful financial background documents that really yield a lot of information of how the rates impact the utilities and vice versa, I suppose. And those are the financial chapters in the system plans, so we have basically four system plans, we have the water, Class A sewer and storm, and they're pretty, they're very dense, they go into a very big deep dive on the needs, the uses, and everything of that nature, but included in that is a financial chapter, which helps us kind of tie the goals and intent of the utilities with how does it get paid for, when and how much. And so that chapter gets reviewed by FCS typically, because they're one of our consultants that can really blend these two areas of expertise, and so they've historically written those financial chapters. Part of both of these efforts and last rate studies included that chapter's work as their, in their scope of work. So I just bring that to the table as to maybe showcase how that might be playing into maybe some report details there, but that's the background I have, and I'll move right on to the next one, and this is a, a big one.
Can, can you mention then, I guess, the report that they're gonna provide, it's gonna be a very draft report?
Yep.
But it's basically lays out everything that we've already done, is that correct?
Yep, it's going to essentially just state in one place all the little choices and decisions that are, are reflective in the presentations that we have. So the presentations, there's lots of them, and they work through lots of details, and sometimes there's a bit of, you know, working through lots of choices at once in each presentation workshopping. The report will just be essentially a list form of that, and it's kind of restating all the work and efforts done.
Thank you.
And, but it again, does not include the GFCs, because we haven't, we haven't done that part yet. Okay. On to the next one. This is a list of items that I would like to bring to council's attention. These are things that between the Public Works Department and Finance, we have been identifying as key concerns for the sustainment of the utilities as a combined utility. And so what I'd like to do is list you and go through each one of these items as we see them as concerns, but my intent in doing this is to showcase a sense from staff of a tightening, tightening financial situation for the utilities, and I think you'll see that as I go through kind of how that all plays out. So the first and foremost one that I think everyone's very familiar with and understands is that if we budget for a project or we budget for anything and we go over said budget, we are now gonna be using money against something else, something has lost money, it's a zero sum game, so if we, we, we're not collecting more revenue than we anticipated, that's always gonna stay the same. So our expenses, when they exceed our revenues, we're going to use something. In this case, when we're looking at the Class A water reservoir coming in above budget, it represents that kind of eating into other things fund. And generally speaking, we talk about that as either delaying projects or potentially even using reserves. In this case, I just wanted to identify that Class A came in 400 over, we anticipate a construction management contract, which will make that number significantly higher, closer to 1 million, maybe a bit more, and that is putting a lot of pressure on the funding of the utilities as a combined utility. It's specifically impacting the wastewater's contributions to the combined utility, but this is a very big ticket item. Just for a frame of reference, our reserves are about a million dollars for the combined utility, so it going over by close to the quantity of the reserves is gonna be quite impactful. I'll move right through this list, but feel free to ask me questions. The next one here is that we have adopted a budget, and we have some CIP projects that are moving as if the rate study is in play, even though it's not yet. So Class A water is an example of a project moving forward on some assumptions that are not quite in play yet, so we haven't started collecting the revenue to match the projected expenses. And as that keeps going, and the longer that diverges, the worse the kind of picture gets, the, the tightening that effect is. So that's a big one. Moving to the rate study adoption delaying, so I brought this up previously, and I want to put cold water on the numbers I put on this, this chart here. I put 144 here, and it's because that's what I told you at the time of the original ordinance. That was a, an estimate from FCS myself, guestimating how much the difference in rate revenue collections is between the previous rate structure and the one we were proposing at the original ordinance. It's not 144,000 anymore, because we have pivoted the ordinance structure, the model that kind of funds the entire utility, it relies more on bonding, less on customers paying more in rates, so to speak, and so the, that means that number's actually probably lower. I don't know what it is yet, I didn't go tasking FCS to go find out, I could tell you it's not zero, it's, it's up there, it's gonna be somewhere in the 80 to 100,000, I'm gonna guess. And so every month that we go by is essentially we're creating a, a further gap, and our revenue collections are not meeting our assumed expenditures. This next view is kind of a bit more of a unpacking detail, but the 2020 rate pause essentially paused our increases in our rate collection, and we kind of inherited lower funds collected from that era, so to speak. So we're correcting for these things now, but we haven't started collecting those corrections yet, because we haven't adopted the new rate structure. So one, the rates didn't go up in 2021, that means we lost that revenue for years of collections and didn't correct for it until much more recently. So that's more of an inherited problem. This next one, the GFCs that are lower than we anticipated, this is really related to growth and how much growth we anticipated in the past rate study. So it's essentially, the rate studies you guys have all seen is built on a lot of assumptions. We make guestimates on development, timing, and growth of our customers, how many citizens we're gonna have and what customer classes they're gonna be in. We make assumptions on the weather patterns even, and I'll get to that part later, but all these things say that the rates that we're collecting, the GFCs we're collecting are both lower because we thought we were gonna grow. Both the mill site being a, a big example of a development that was anticipated to happen that didn't, so we didn't collect the GFCs from that project developing, but we also had a lot of project timing that we had to meet that means that we just saw a tightening of our funds. We didn't collect the GFCs, but we still went ahead with some of the projects. The rate collection is kind of similar, so we put in here 785,000. That is a, a pretty good guess that we have, but what I want to do is don't take that number and write it down and, you know, pinky swear that's gonna be it, because we're still working on finalizing it. It's gonna be very close to this. What I want to kind of put cold water on is the, what is causing it? We think there's a lot of things that can impact this, but what we think a lot of it is, is that we didn't see the, the growth that we anticipated. So if we don't have as many citizens living here as we anticipated back in the 2016 or 2020 rate studies, they're not paying water bills, and they're not paying their sewer bills or their combined bills as they might be. And so those all are kind of playing into this, we're not collecting enough revenue to keep up with our proposed expenditures. This last one here is kind of a, this is a complicated bit to unpack, but essentially on the operations side, so not the capital side, the operations side of wastewater went above their budgeted amount for the biennium, and to try to correct for this, what we did was we did not transfer over to the utility capital side by the amount essentially that they overran, so in this case 444,000. And some explanation for this is that there's a lot of things that were assumed in the previous rate study, like electricity costs, like how much was the wastewater's electricity bill going to be over the course of a biennium, was pretty low, was insufficient. So we saw, we had to correct for that, and we had some, it's actually a pretty complicated combination of things, but we also believe a lot of the WRF3 construction caused a lot of increases in the cost of the WR facility to operate, and so that, that's gonna be a lot to unpack, and we don't actually have perfect understanding exactly how many numbers went to what cause, so I can't, I can't tally up a list of things to get you a very perfect example of why it's over by that much. It's gonna be a slurry of options and reasons, so I'll leave it there. I know I already consented, so you guys have questions, so I'll keep moving through my presentation. And then this last one here is that we're working on projects at the, an accelerated rate, and what this does is that we're collecting less revenue by the time we start the projects, that puts us into a cash flow pinch, and really what I'm showing you here is a cash flow problem, and one of the biggest impacts of that is that with our rate study structure, we assume bonding in 2025, and it is currently just about May, and the difficulty with bonding is it takes four to six months, and we believe four to six months, it could even take longer. The trick with that is that we will probably not be able to collect the bond revenue in 2025 to cover some of the costs that we're incurring in 2025. And what we're noticing is that we are crossing that line, I, I know you guys have all seen the budget reports where they talk about what year the lines cross, and that's the revenue versus expenditures, that's what I'm very worried about, because that's my, that's my job, and that's kind of what I'm trying to showcase here is really a cash flow concern. So we have that big project, the Class A reservoir, it's very expensive, it's all right now, we're not collecting enough bonding, which we've assumed we need in this year, and so by the time we start 2026, we'll be below our reserve requirement, which does put us at risk of not needing some bond obligations, and also makes it harder to get bonds when I'm meeting our reserve numbers. Think that's a good place to pause, so.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, two things, number one, could you just go back one slide?
Yep.
I want to get a date on something, so the order, the ordinance was adopted on May 10th, 2021, okay, yeah, because I wanted to check that. And then also, let's see, right, and then on the next one, this is a more substantial question, which is, oh, which of these items have already been factored into the current rate study? Because, and the reason I ask is, the 400,000, you said, yeah, well, that's not really gonna affect it, and that's the biggest item on there, or at least close to it.
You're talking about the very top 400,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this number's actually gonna be larger once we include the construction management contract, and it does have a big impact on our cash flow, because when we start spending money for this project, we will not be able to instantly reimburse ourselves for the, the loan that we're gonna get from the Department of Ecology. We will have some delay time, and this is a very big project with pretty high spend per month, and it will have a lot of spend in the beginning of it too, because of purchasing of materials and things of that nature. And so what we're worried about is that there's gonna be that, or, you know, let's call it two and a half months if we're being really hopeful about how quickly Ecology turns around reimbursements, but we're concerned that we're gonna kind of feel that pinch from spending money and not getting paid back for it fast enough, and that our reserve is kind of at risk of being chewed up a little bit because of that impact. I would say that's a very big component of this. Not having the bonds means we're essentially short the reserve protection amount that this, that this entire rate structure is assuming. A lot of these projects, for example, we didn't account for growth in the past rate study, we didn't account for the pause that happened in 2020, some of the overspending that happened in operations, we've corrected for a lot of these assumptions in the rate study that we presented, but it's not adopted yet, and so it's not essentially in play. So I've corrected for that electrical bill being incorrect. We've, we've gone back and we've looked at wastewater's historical electrical bills and how much they've had to pay to make sure that lights stay on, so to speak, and we've made it so that it's an accurate reflection of the need. And so we did that, we made those corrections for as many as we could, and we kind of made the best guesses, we collected that entire setup up, and then we've taken that plus our capital, and that's how we try to identify how much money the utilities need.
Councilor Benson?
Yeah, I think you're addressing the question that I had, was, it sounds like a, a fair percentage of the problem is inability to accurately predict the future, which I'm not knocking you for that, but, but I am wondering if through this process, we may have gotten better at it. Like, have you discovered ways that we might more accurately predict the future in the future, or is that another prediction of the future?
I would say, although, I'm always seeking refinements of this, of this nature, but I do not anticipate that we will ever be perfect, and that's why we have reserves, and that's why there's guesses on inflation expansions, but all these are kind of very guesses, and if we are only reviewing our rates every four years or six years or however many years, the longer we get from the adoption date and the work we've done right now, the more inaccuracies we'll build. So by the time we're six years away, there's almost no way to feel confident about the work that we put into it now. Things can change too fast, and they have seemed to have done so. I don't believe that the past rate study was done with ill intent or something like that, they didn't make big mistakes, they made the best educated guesses at the time, and it just happened to be inaccurate, but it doesn't mean it was something that could be corrected perfectly for, just with grit or determination or something like that. But I do try to find moments to refine our process, simplify it, and be more accurate.
City Administrator?
So I have been involved with these studies at other jurisdictions, I want to say that by far, this is the most comprehensive detailed rate study that I've ever experienced, and I think you should all give yourself some, some kudos, because this is probably about as accurate as you can get them. I've seen rate studies where they assume a 3% interest, don't look at any equipment, don't look at the staff, don't look at any of the CIP projects, and, and mosey on for 20 years. This isn't that, that a lot of work, Dylan did a heck of a job, FCS did a heck of a job, and, and you guys have been through this with a fine tooth comb, so.
Was there another slide?
There is, yes. So I do not like to be all doom and gloom, I do, in this slideshow, would like to present some kind of considerations for how we might seek to get around this tightness, as I've been calling it, in this financial kind of bind, and essentially, I'm sure you could have guessed what I was gonna suggest from the get go, however, what we're looking at is maybe some delay of certain CIP projects in the utility. I listed a couple here that could be considered for delay, some of them I actually think we will choose to do no matter what. Urban forestry improvements, we're probably gonna package that up and into the biennial effort, and so just do one big contracted, and that'll be in 2026, not 2025, so that does ease the burden of touch, gives a little more breathing room. Another couple of examples here are essentially financing the shortfall. So the first one here is we have increasing that transfer from operations, so essentially trying to collect back that, the transfer that never happened back in 2024. This would require us to work with our operations team to make sure we can do that comfortably, without consequences to the utility, to safety. There's a lot of, you know, refinement that we did to produce the operations budgets across the utilities, and that means there's not a lot of wiggle room, so to speak, to not risk things, and we really don't want to be risking things, and so we could talk about that, and that's certainly an option. And the next one is some short-term financing, we've talked about this previously, but the, we could go through a bank, an external entity to the city, we can also consider the city's other funds to borrow from, so to speak, and that would essentially mean an inter-fund loan, we could do that from a few places, but generally speaking, we would probably look to And that would essentially mean an interfund loan, we could do that from a few places, but generally speaking, we would probably look to. Either the non-utility CIP, or we'd be looking to the general fund. There is consequences to both. But as you, and I think could see, and what this is trying to describe is that, that if you borrow money from somewhere, something doesn't happen. In this, a lot of this project talking, we've either been talking about the future or other projects, if we go to interfund transfers. That can mean different things, whether it's the non-utility CIP, that money is designated for something and could be spent. And so borrowing the money from there does risk those projects moving forward, either at the time that we have set for them. Or the scope that we have set for them. That is the, that's the bulk of my presentation. That's what I have here as considerations, I'm positive that there's others, but I think this represents the approach that me and the staff would consider. Walking through, and what I didn't want to do is say, this is exactly how we solve this problem. Because there's actually kind of a, a bit of a way to solve the problem that we can work through over time. And there's probably going to be some realities that we can't cross, I think we have to probably look at some project delays. An interfund loan, I don't think is the, is an appropriate tool to carve the entire solution from. And we should be looking at doing a combination of things.
So the non-utility, that means that we would be taking funding away from other projects within the non-utility?
Yes, and so specifically, sales tax funded, non-utility projects. So for example, don't consider transportation projects, they have restricted use. But look at the sales tax projects, and you're going to see in their community center, you'll see, that's, that's the big one. They represent a lot of sales tax, sales tax is the one-time revenue that we receive from sales tax. And so it tends to end up in the utility like, for, for everything that's not transportation. And it has a very, a much more open use case, whereas some REIT has more restrictions for us, we want to be more careful and cautious with how we use it. So sales tax is probably what we're going to prioritize.
So we've, so you mentioned twenty twenty, so there was a whole year that we did not increase. Have rate increase, right? And that's twelve months. We're getting next to nearing five months, May first, we have not had an increase. And so that's, that's an impact, and so that's, you know, that's what's happening, right? You have to push out, you can't do the bonds, have to do intertransfers, so. We need to think about, I mean, there, you could motion at night to approve the rates, would actually begin May first. Would be an option. Because we've already had this, this would be the second reading, which was tabled last time, but. Pastor Martin.
Yeah, I, I have a question on multifamily housing units. We, we have a couple of them in the city, are those individually metered, those units, or is that paid by the operator? Because I, I. I'm kind of curious.
It's individually, yeah.
Individually.
And they get charged the multifamily rate though.
Right.
Yeah, so every unit has, it's like a condo.
Right.
Every unit pays their own water bill. Or combined bill, I should say. Thank you. There's a part of this that we will be taking all these considerations into play when you see another agenda bill in the utilities. So the solution will kind of be unpacking itself partially there, but yeah, like the mayor said, we're, we're, I'm looking at that. Financial shrinking from the revenue side worried, and I'm looking now at all the capital projects that are coming in. Trying to figure out where, which ones are causing all the problems and where and how fast and when, and whether we can stomach it, so to speak, with the reserves.
Pastor Cotton.
I know at our last meeting, that there was some concern about not having a. Summary sheet in front of us, and, and so looking at the information provided, it seems that. You know, the last two rate studies, there weren't specific like summaries presented to the council when they made a. Decision about the ordinance and, and approving the rate studies. So I guess my question to the other council members is. Is, is there more specific information that you're looking for to? I mean, we've had multiple presentations with, you know, rate adjustments, coordinating the percentage of. You know, the, the bond allowance versus what the rate hike would be for the, for the citizens and stuff. And I feel like we've, and, and believe me, I am the novice in this group about this, but I feel like staff has done everything. The consultants have done everything to kind of answer every question or scenario that we've come up with. So is there specific things that you're, I mean, yes, it would be great if we didn't have to raise the rates and we could do all of our projects and. You know, that would be utopia, but it's not going to happen, we have, we're going to have to make some concessions about things. And it certainly seemed that with, with kind of what was being presented was a. You know, with all these things in consideration, so. Very long story short, what additional information is council looking to get presented to them besides like a. It's like a specific, like a summary page, because I mean, this has already been summarized to us multiple times.
Pastor Johnson.
For me, it's less about me, it's more about the public. Now, on the twenty twenty utility rate study. There are two council members who were there at the time who told me that they did have at least a draft of a study presented to them. So I, I was taking them at their word in the past. I was not there at the time, so I cannot confirm one way or the other. I see that this is staff's interpretation of what happened, so do with that what we will. But for me, it's more about for the public than whether or not we as a council have received enough information. And what I am not convinced of is that the average member of the public would be able to put together what it is that we have done. In a reasonable fashion by going through the information that is currently available. Whereas a solid document as a rate study would do that, and a draft would be fine for me. But bar that, I just don't feel like we can, or at least that I can, move forward confidently. That, that there's enough information for the public to put together what it was that we did. So that's my reasoning.
Appreciate that.
Any other comment, any other comments? Pastor Martin.
Okay, I'm going to go out on a limb. I really would like some more comfort around the reasoning, and I understand that. We're, we're trying to, to narrow the gap between single-family and multifamily and, and commercial. And the, the multifamily, I understand is that we're trying to be sensitive to everyone's budget, but at the same time. Is it real, really realistic to have a zero percent increase over the next three years? Or four years of this study and not be shorting ourselves? I, I'd like to see the modeling around what if it were only a simple one percent increase, knowing that inflation is going to grow. And maybe that will give me a little more comfort if it's only pennies on the dollar. Or is it significantly more, especially given the fact that we've got a bit of a shortfall already incurred? That's, that's my one concern, maybe I'm, I'm totally wrong, but I understand that, you know, we're trying to, trying to make it more fair. But I want to make sure that I have enough information, I'm, I'm not at that point.
So Dylan, you have a response to that?
I just wanted to kind of step back and kind of explain the, how we got to the. The COSA strategy, which is how do we implement what's needed in each of these customer classes to make them paying the appropriate amount for their share of the utility? In this case, we could have chosen a path that instantaneously corrects for the imbalance. And so we could have made commercial pay, high commercial pay fifty-seven percent more this year, we could make multifamily go down by negative. Ten or fifteen, I, I don't remember exactly, but we could correct for it immediately, and then all we would do is make the. Following years track with the needed increases of the utility as a whole, not the customer classes. So it's like two moving parts, one, the customer, the whole utility needs to go up a little bit by some amount. To do that, we've moved all the little pieces within it, some of them are imbalanced, and so we're correcting that imbalance right now. Instead of doing it all at once, we're phasing it. And the way the council chose to do it in this COSA presentation is to make multifamily just go zero, not negative. Not try to correct for it all at once, but to just let the essentially inflation of the, of the world catch up with them. And then we were increasing the rates by other customer classes by more than just the total utility going up. If that makes sense.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and then Pastor Johnson.
We'll remind you, we are, we are refining the way we do our estimates. But at the end of the day, there are estimates and projections into the future, and you ask ten people and you'll get eleven answers. So based on that, it has never been the practice to just knee jerk these things around, is he wins the Lotto. We get another Public Works Director in here, and the assumptions will change, the estimates will change, and the reflection will change. So it's, it's not advisable to just knee jerk to the final solution, but to angle in toward it. Because by the time you get close to it, the answer may have changed. And that's been our practice in the rate studies leading up to this. Okay, so to answer your, to do what you want to make it fully equitable, you almost, you have to do negative in some area and positive. And force more burden in other areas, based on, again, at the end of the day, estimates of what these costs are and how they get allocated across. So hitting a bullseye, really hard here, hitting close, yeah, and we go for close.
Pastor Johnson.
So to me, this is the kind of thing that I would expect in an explanation that the public would be able to digest, and I don't believe that in the. Public facing documents that are out there, that that explanation is in there. Rather, what there is is, here's the COSA we came down to, and you can go back and you can watch the video, and you could hear some of that explanation, but. Dylan just beautifully said it, I thought, and I would love to see that in part of the write-up, so that the average person or business owner, when they're like, well, what's going on here with this? When they get that explanation of, well, if we had just gone ahead and immediately righted the ship, then that would have been the result. And it doesn't sound to me like that's what my fellow council member wants either. But then the explanation of landing on, okay, so if we do zero for one, we do this much for that one. Still, the optics are not perfect, but they're never going to be perfect. But it's certainly a lot better than going for the so-called knee jerk reaction. But my point is, that explanation I think would be incredibly helpful.
Pastor Christiansen, you ran it. Do you have any other comments? So the report will be coming, when, when we see it next week, you think?
I'll see it next week, and we'll be working on refinements with FCS. And then it will be the next available council meeting, next, I do not have time to get into the very first Parks and Public Works Committee meeting in May. So we'll be at the second one, which is May twentieth.
And so that, that point would have adoption of the rates during that meeting? So rates would be effective June first?
The following council meetings, the twentieth is the Public Works Committee, and then I, seven days later, or not seven days, six days later, so the twenty-sixth. For the council meeting, and then it takes a few days to go into effect. I think it's June, but I want to double, don't quote me on that, we can't, there are some time delays that happen between the ordinance taking, being signed, and then taking effect.
Pastor Vincent.
Is there, what if it didn't go to committee first, is there a sooner meeting that we could get it to? That you could get it ready for on time? So I, I hear you saying you're going to bring it to Parks and Public Works first, and then council, but what if you didn't? Could you get it to? To us earlier if you didn't do that?
In theory, for sure, I'm pretty sure I can just walk things to council if council agrees with the agenda, but. That's not usually the process, so I don't.
It's not usually the process, I understand, but I'm.
And I don't know if it'll be ready either.
I, I, as a Parks and Public Works council member, or is there a committee member, I would be fine with going directly to. Directly to council if we can get it there sooner, if it's okay with my fellow committee members.
Be on the twelfth, be two weeks from tonight?
Great idea.
I saw his stress level go like that.
Yeah, the tightness.
City Minister.
So what I'm hearing is, is keep the agenda bill the same, just add an attachment to it.
This is the report.
interim report.
How about that will be our goal?
Yeah, okay, yes, I think the twelfth is, I will work with FCS and we will make that a, no, it's okay, I, I want this to go forward too, so.
And you can also advise us the fifth and sixth at Parks, or the sixth and Parks and Public Works F and A, whether that's still, if you think you can make that landing.
Okay, okay.
Woodmark Chocolate help?
No, I'm, I'm ready to go, I'll, we'll see if I can, I'll keep you appraised of.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Is there any further report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
No.
Any report for Finance Administration?
Just a real quick one, no stated report, but I do want to. Try to bring in at least events in the next two weeks that maybe we, the council want to do. There is a downtown merch association meeting, May first. At Segallo Sellers at nine AM. Do we have anybody from council attending? Okay, so we got that one covered. There's the Mount Si Fishing Game Club Kids Trout Derby on May third, starting at seven AM, an early one.
It actually starts at six.
Saturday.
That's a Saturday.
Saturday at six AM.
Seven.
Seven AM.
Amazing.
Yeah, it's dawn.
Fishing, yeah, it's fishing, you got to get up there early.
I, I may be there.
It starts at dawn?
It's seven.
What, what, what is dawn right now?
About five thirty, I was going to say.
Five, five. Seven AM.
Does it start at seven AM, or does it start at dawn?
Starts at dawn.
Starts at dawn, I can do that one.
Oh, wow.
You can do dawn, but not seven AM?
I can, I, I won't be able to, I won't be able to stay long past seven AM, but I can do dawn.
Okay.
Can you debone a trout?
All right, that's it for F and A, thank you.
So also, May twenty-eighth is SVGA, is anyone who's going to that?
I don't have my calendar.
You got to invite.
I didn't invite.
That's May? Yeah, May twenty-eighth.
Where is this one?
North Bend.
Me? For April.
Also, isn't that the Chamber?
April will be this week.
Chamber Luncheon, that date, the twenty-eighth?
I don't know about that, but SVGA.
That was May third, May twenty-eighth. Interested in that one.
So we have, you have to tell us for sure, because we have to pay for your mail, so, so we can send out, do you want to send out an invite to them? If they accept it, then you, then we'll pay for the mail.
Okay, thank you. May twenty-eighth, after Wednesday, okay, it's going to be.
North Bend.
So let's all take a look at our calendars and then advise.
Sounds good. Thank you. So next item is City Council Priorities, twenty twenty-five affirmation, for Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
Do we have the material to show? I mean, we did have a section in our retreat just to review the council priorities, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to bring them up that we can. Look at them and reaffirm. If anybody feels any, might need to, thank you. I just want, you know, are we good with these at this stage? Or is there a desire that we spend some time, take a look at a particular one, flesh it out a little more? I'm just looking for feedback from the council.
I think there are two that were added to assure a safe community. And then one in the fiscal transparency, which is the full, we're a lot of, Tyler Munis. And I think the sure was the, um, the of exceptional first responder coverage, and then strengthened regional partnerships. Are we fine with those?
Good. Take, take, take a look. If you have thoughts after tonight, send them on. I think F and A, we ought to start taking a look, going through these, and maybe if we wanna drive some actions on any particular ones, start looking and do that. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I believe that also the committees were supposed to take up their respective segments and detail parts.
Right.
Go through those as, as time allows.
Right. So we'll just, those are accepted. If you have changes, please reach out to Mayor Pro Tim, and then we will.
Let you know.
Okay.
Have further discussion if needed. Okay. Let's move on to the mayor's report. Good news, we received notice that Snoqualmie ranks number four safest city in Washington in the twenty, for twenty twenty-five, oh, it's in the twenty twenty-five safest city report. So number four. So the ones ahead of us are Sammamish, Cedar Valley, Kamis, and then Snoqualmie. And it's based on the violent crime rate for twenty twenty-five was point two percent. Property crime rate was thirteen point eight percent, which is down from twenty-five percent the year before. So we made some significant strides there. Councillor Johnson?
So even though we used to be number one, my interpretation of this is, isn't that we've become less safe? It's that other communities have also become more safe, just as we have.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree. Use your finger up.
To me?
You were, yeah, okay, wait.
It's your finger.
My finger? Well, I'm just, um, I'd be curious to see the listing of the cities and historical, just in support of some of our other conversations.
Comparable cities.
Well, I'm just.
We give you the current list, but historical.
Yeah, I know, I was.
Kelly. Okay.
You can tell me no. Just curiosity.
Are you curious about the valley or? Was it tapped in? Okay. We can look at that. Okay, moving on. Um, so we attended the North Bend Council's workshop last week where they, where they reviewed police service options. Um, and they discussed, you know, numerous things, including we responded to them, they had a question and answers. So we had sent a bunch of information over to them. During that meeting, they did state that the final decision regarding police services will be made at the May sixth council meeting. So we plan to attend that and probably have public comment. So, so I encourage you to put that on your agenda, which should be May sixth, which should be a Tuesday, probably about seven o'clock. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Can we move both public work, Parks and Public Works and F and A ahead thirty minutes on that night?
Yep. Yes, we should be able to.
Is that okay?
It's fine, yeah.
Tuesday, right?
Yeah, Tuesday, so if people wanna leave and get over there, give them some time.
Sounds good. Okay, and then finally, you know, we all know the legislature adjourned yesterday after a hundred and five days. Um, they approved the three biennial budget budgets. I'm still kind of search through the information, trying to find further information about it, um, what the bene, what happened, what the benefits are. They did say they brought on some new funding tools for public safety and a modest sharing of new gas tax. So there'll be some, some benefits that, um, we will take a look at. But the next step is for the governor who has until May twentieth to take action on, on the bill sent to him, to sign them. So we will find out if they are final at that point or not. That's all the information I have for now. What about our community liaison reports? Anyone have a report? Councillor Cotton?
Uh, yes, a couple items. This month's Ridge Merchants Association meeting. There was some information how the Highway eighteen roadwork closures and delays are causing, uh, many businesses to, especially up in the Ridge Business Park, to keep their employees working from home. Uh, many of the office buildings are vacant up there right now, or just with skeleton crews. Businesses like T-Mobile, they have three hundred employees working remote since December of twenty-four. Also PSE, Space Labs and Z-Tech, as well as others that have decreased personnel on site, which unfortunately is affecting our Ridge businesses because they're not getting the lunch crowds, they're not getting the shopping that they normally have been doing. So for the last six months or so, that's been going on. Also, on the horizon, um, work on, uh, two oh two will be, uh, uh, I think, starting up shortly, but it's gonna be from the Parkway to Fall City. That's gonna be some big delays going on. So there was some question about, um, whether the city can ask for, um, mitigation from, uh, WashDOT and the construction company. Uh, I think there's, is there grants for businesses affected by the, the Highway eighteen commute issue? So I, I don't know if that's something we can look into doing for our, for our businesses and such. And another thing, uh, for, for the last few years, and, um, we've, there's been, we've had a lot of discussions about the Creative Arts District, which has been kind of hard, because we have two separate kind of business communities, downtown and on the ridge, and it's not a contiguous geographical area. So there's also a potential we could do instead a creative economy type of, uh, business improvement area or BIA to, um, you know, uh, kind of put this into a, another alternative. And lastly, for the Ridge, uh, the, there is a new Muslim church that's opened up on the Ridge. So, um, uh, public health, uh, the Public Hospital District number four, Snoqualmie Valley Health, the Board of Commissioners. Um, it was announced that their SAFE program is now in progress, is, uh, uh, working. It's the Sexual Assault Forensic Examiner. It's now available in the valley, and so the, for our first responders. And that's through, and it's Dr. Catherine Thompson that's spearheading that up there. So now sexual assault victims don't have to leave, um, the, the valley area. Also, they're still on track for their hub groundbreaking, um, between May twenty-third and May twenty-fifth, shovels in the ground. So they're still closing on the land thing too, so, um, hopefully that all goes forward according to, to that. Um, one public health announcement, um, HPIA, Highly Pathogenic Avian Influenza or Bird Flu, H five N one. It's here in Washington. Um, it's been detected since October of twenty twenty-four. It's here in Western Washington. It's mostly among, um, our, uh, poultry flocks, uh, both commercial and backyard. Uh, we had a commercial flock, um, the big egg farm down in Franklin County. Other, several other counties are also affected. Eight hundred thousand chickens are affected and had to be euthanized, so that's why eggs are so expensive. So, but unfortunately, it's highly pathogenic, um, virulent to birds. It's spread through, um, well, the Canadian honkers basically have been carrying it, um, through the country and have brought it up here, put it in the water, and, um, what we have affected out here in the valley is the raptors. So it's disseminating our bald eagles. Um, I've actually found two great-horned owls that have been affected by it and have been doing some surveillance work with, Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, and this is out at Three Rivers. So it's, it's here unfortunately. And, uh, it can jump to mammals, including humans, and so we have had a dozen folks test positive in, um, Washington State. And it is luckily not so virulent in people. It's mostly mild respiratory symptoms and pink eye type of stuff. But if you find sick or dead waterfowl, raptors, wildlife, please contact Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and do not handle or try and touch the critters.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Apparently Snoqualmie got a shout-out in a major TV production recently. So if there's any fans of The Last of Us out there in the wider region, come on down to Snoqualmie and see what all the fuss is about.
Great. Councillor Christensen?
Um, yep, so I am recently on the nominating committee now for, uh, SCA pick group. So if you are interested in any regional boards, we are looking for folks to be on the Advisory Council for Aging and Disability Services as well as the Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force and the Joint Recommendations Committee, which looks specifically as an interjurisdictional body that provides funding recommendations and advice and guidelines and, and funding for, um, homeless and emergency assistance programs and community development projects. So if any of that is up your alley, please reach out. I have a lot of additional information, could tell you where they meet. And we would love to see more people from City Council on the regional boards.
Councillor Washington?
I'll get more information on this. I can't seemingly get into my outlet, but Snoqualmie Watershed Forum is having a tour on the south floor, because of Sky Comish. It's like, uh, May twenty-first, from two to six PM, uh, before our, uh, bi-monthly meeting, so. I'll get some information to everyone as soon as I can get into my email.
Yeah, if you'd send that to us, that'd be great. Anything else? Okay. So we do not have another executive director or executive session, excuse me.
I should, yeah, cheers.
So with that being no further business to come for a council, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
By Councillor Button, second by Councillor Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous that we are adjourned.